Camera.
All right. We good?
You're good.
Okay, would you all please join us for the pudgelations?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God. Any visible with liberty and justice for all.
Right. All right, thank you for coming. Okay, so this evening, we're gonna start off with, we actually have two public hearings this evening. Um, one back to back, so with that, um, I'll open the first public hearing. For, uh, proposed ordinance revisions, um, this is a public hearing for five thirty on. Oh, good, what's today eighteenth, there we go, eighteen, I forgot what day it was, so, um, I think we have, uh. Want Isabel to brief us on anything, or we can, we've gone through quite a.
Yeah, the, I know the board had a quick intro to this before calling the special town or the public hearing for tonight. Um, so there were three ordinances that have some minor revisions, non substantive revisions, the land use. Um, ordinance, the site plan review ordinance and the subdivision ordinance, um. Isabel had in her memo, um, a lot of them were just to kind of clarify typographical errors. Um, to define previously undefined terms and to make ordinances more user friendly to the average reader. And then there were updated, updating references to the administration, um, the development review process. Um, she wanted to separate these from other revisions that the board is considering, um.
Okay.
Where these are non substantive, and the other ones likely will be, um, but just to clarify this, because it has created potentially some issues now and trying to. Work with applicants and enforce things now, so just trying to clarify some of those, well hanging fruit.
Isabel, do you want any?
Isabel, yeah, as soon as you do, want to come up, do you have anything to? Add for the general public and we'll open it to any questions or comments.
Um, I don't have anything necessarily to add, um, I did receive a question over email about why the, um. Sort of list of mapping lots in each zoning district were removed, are being proposed to be removed from the land use ordinance. Um, that is actually as a result of, um. A, uh, request from a, a property owner back when I first started with the town. Um, basically, it requires that the ordinance is updated every time someone sells their property or splits their property. Um, clearly, that's not a very productive use of, um, of time, so. If we can accomplish the same thing by simply referencing the existing zoning map that, um. Is regularly updated and doesn't have to go through the whole special town meeting or town meeting process, um. That's typically the easier way to do it and still allows us to be legally compliant. Um, I think that was the only sort of outstanding question, but I'm happy to answer anything that you might have or any members of the public might have.
Do we have any questions, comments, concerns from the? Audience, yeah, I don't see anybody online. Tonight, so.
From the board?
Yes, Kevin.
Kevin, no, no hands up or anything, okay, yeah, oh, all right, well. Hearing none, we'll, uh, close the public hearing for the proposed ordinance, uh, provisions, oh, thanks Isabel. And with that, we'll open up the next public hearing, uh, this is the, uh, medical marijuana business license for above and beyond LLC. Um. Andy, where do we stand with, um? Uh, applications and whatnot, do we have a representative from?
Yeah.
Is that you? Yeah, maybe, so, come on up, just introduce yourself and your, your name and town, that's all, yeah.
Danielle, I'm from Freeman.
Yeah, I did, yeah, how you doing, thanks for coming, so, yeah, um.
So we do have an application, um, Danielle has gone through the planning board process for site plan review and that's been approved with conditional, conditional approval. Um, and the application for the business license. Um, Danielle's working with Isabel on helping to get this put together, Isabel had reached out to the staff, um, that are relevant and listed in the ordinance to do so. Um, in reviewing the list of items that just need to be submitted, I think. One of the outstanding, um, and questions I have is, you have an LLC set up with this business?
Yep, um, it gets a little weird because we set the LLC up before we realized that. We couldn't file taxes together, um, just through the town, I mean, the state. Each caregiver can only own one store rent location and only one caregiver can own it. So it's set up as an LLC, but I own it. My dad has no rights to it anymore.
Okay, so what we don't have, um, is perhaps clarification and the articles of incorporation for the LLC that was created. That just kind of shows that you are the only, um. How do we word it in here, owner, officer, member, manager, partner, um, in the business? And so that LLC, that articles, articles of incorporation should help clarify that and without that. Um, you know, it gets, you know, for us, I'm looking at the application, the dot, things you've provided, there's things that list your father on there. Um, we still have, and so it just, it'll help us clarify for the record.
Yeah, so I end up filing under my social security number, so they didn't make me form another kind of thing, they just made me do that. So I still have just been running it under my LLC and I was gonna use my EIN this year. I haven't done my taxes, obviously, so I don't know what the outcome will be, but that's how it was going to.
Right, so just, you know, for the purpose of having the record here and the application with the ordinance requires. You know, where you're submitting the application as in LLC, um, you know, what you are telling us is that it is just you. One of the other documents you submitted was from the IRS giving an EIN and that was, and that was addressed to, um, Charles. And so that is another piece that just, when we look back on it. Um, if you can help us get a clearer picture on officers, members, owners, partners on this are, because it looks like there's two.
Yeah.
So we have a.
So what do you need a letter from my father saying that he gave up his? Part of it, I don't.
Did they, did they issue you a new EIN?
No, I just filed it under my social security.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Because that's how.
But the, but the application we have has EIN with both parties listed on it.
Well, it has, um, the letter from the IRS was addressed to Charles.
When was that?
Um. That was dated back in twenty twenty, September of twenty twenty, when the LLC.
Right, that's when we incorporated.
Been incorporated, okay. I think that's just one thing, and then.
It needs to get cleaned up so that it doesn't look like there's two.
Right.
Okay.
Um. I don't know if you have someone you work with on like the accounting or business, you know, we, like the legal side of the business setup to help, you know, understand or explain. And kind of walk through that process of clarifying that piece, um, just so, you know, if it is just you running it, again, it looks like in the challenge, you know. Where the ordinance is written, it would also mean that we just need to run a background check on Charles, which maybe is the simplest thing, I don't know. You know, if that's what would be easier or not, but it looks like there's two, and we just have to verify the way this was approved.
Do that, but. He legally can't own part of it, so that.
Do you have, do you have a lawyer that you work with at all?
Uh-uh.
No.
So we, to satisfy the, um, well, all parties, right, the ordinance and everything, you need to get. His name, Charles, off of the, if he's not an owner, then he needs to be off the application, right, or.
Well, if the application is coming in as the LLC being the applicant to.
Yeah, and he's attached to the LLC.
Right, and then that's what we're requiring.
As far as that paperwork goes, yeah, yeah, okay, from the original.
Does she need to refile just under her own name?
Um. For the business license, it might be something we can look at, it might just verify with the state office. Um, well, the site plan review and the issuance with that, I think can be separate from the business license and who's on that potentially as an applicant, but we just want to verify that.
I would think they'd be able to. Reissue the LLC or the EIN without. His name on it, right?
Well, she, she applied under her own name, just her name.
As the application submitted to the town.
Right, yeah. When we attach the LLC to it and, uh, the.
Unfortunately, it sounds like I need an attorney to get, uh, something drawn up that would be sent to both the IRS and to have your father sign, saying he's no longer a part of it.
It's always the paperwork.
Yeah.
So it's the paperwork, yeah, and especially with this type of application, there's a lot of.
Probably would be very expensive at all, I mean, it's a one page document, probably.
Yeah, it's more to get anyone to return a phone call.
Yeah, 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 it is, uh, it is a tough part, so, but, uh, just gonna make sure all your documentation, everything is, this, um.
So what do we need her to do?
Well, right now, the. From the paperwork that was turned into the, I'm understanding, right, paperwork that was turned into the town, it has an LLC attached and the paperwork shows that your, your father. Is, is part, is a co-owner on the LLC, um. In order to satisfy that, there's background checks and things, anybody that owns it has to.
Which might be the easiest thing, but I don't know if. That would be legally allowed state. Just because I know the one caregiver, one store.
Sure.
So that's.
Well, that's on the state end, right, so would a background check, would that satisfy what we need to get? Through, is that?
I mean, if the issue is with the state licensing process, that might be a little bit different, potentially than the local approval for the license, um, but. I think simply somehow separating the LLC or at least verifying that it is just you now potentially on the LLC. Um, and that he doesn't have a stake in it, or if it's a way to look into, um, applying as just you as a caregiver. Um, if that's a potential avenue. Because right now, what we have is you're listed on there as well as the LLC applying.
Right.
Yeah, I think we could be in trouble if we went forward the way it is, it's confusing.
I guess it's just, it's town laws and state laws, they just come fine, so it makes it a little bit more confusing, but. Yeah, it's not.
There's a lot of moving parts with, uh, where you step in with the state has their guidelines and then, um, uh. Follow through on those, but then it gets, yeah, it gets, my, so, you know, with these types of applications, we have to be very careful to. Make sure it's all satisfied on all ends, it's not muddy for you either long term, you know, something doesn't come back and.
Know if the background check would be.
Good. Yeah, yeah, I don't know, but that, like, it might not satisfy on the state's end, it might come back and say, well, you know, you've got an application with two. A co-owner, but you can't do that, so it could come back and it might get you short term, get where you need to be, but long term, it might come back and.
Right.
Bite you, so probably the.
That part.
Best bet would be like, as suggested by, by Tom and others, that, uh, you might have to get somebody. Um, yeah, if you have, you know, a lawyer to look at it real quick and see how they can, um, so if you, if you've already gone through your LLC and, and his name's not on it. Um, it just needs to be somehow. Part of that application, right, is that what?
Yeah, and the state office, you know, perhaps, I mean, they've been pretty responsive so far and us reaching out to them and, and, you know, similarly would be. Just as responsive, I presume, as, you know, for a caregiver or someone trying to get a license, and so. Maybe like on the side about the background check and some of that, if they could maybe help just clarify some of what you need and maybe you don't need a lawyer on that part of it to understand. You know, if there's a potential issue or not.
Another thing you could do, I think, is contact the state and tell them that you want to terminate that old LLC and then create a new LC with just you on it.
I think that's gonna be the best bet.
And you can probably do that off the internet, it's probably a very simple LLC, so whatever your old LLC says, you can find this thing.
Yeah.
But if you call the state and ask them, tell them what the situation is, because you've got nothing to hide, I think they'll, it'll be an easy solution.
Yeah, yeah, we want to get you there, just need to get all the paperwork squared away, it's, uh, it's confusing.
I was worried about that part, but I, no one reached out to me to clarify anything, but I did send a little message saying that my dad wasn't part of it anymore. And then no one responded, like, hey, so he's on the papers. So.
I mean, this is with the state.
With us.
Oh, with us, oh, with us.
Yeah, we got, I think everything came in Thursday, I think you came in.
Yeah, she said Thursday afternoon.
Yeah. And the only other thing, I think, was just to clarify, um. Think in the past, there had been a couple of violations issued, it was a couple of years, a couple of years ago, maybe, um, about odor. And just, um, you know, where it's in here, and one of the things to look at for new, new applications is evidence of compliance or the requirements of the ordinance, um. And just, you know, most kind of asking like, what have you, what have you learned through that process and how do you anticipate being able to mitigate and reduce that? Um, is a potential issue in the new location.
We went over this last time, I'm pretty sure, but I haven't had any complaints since then and I. Went from four. Air purifiers to seven, and it seems to work, also, that complaint was inside the building, it was my next door neighbor, so. This building is alone, and really, there shouldn't be any complaints about what are there.
Great, yeah. How's the project coming along, I see you've done a lot of improvements there, and so.
It's coming along, it's a lot of work.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure, yeah. Uh, but no, no, no close neighbors there, so you got.
No, not too close.
Buffer, so, okay.
They smell it, then we really.
Yeah, yeah, the purifiers aren't, uh, strong enough at that point, so. Um, okay, so it sounds like we just, yeah, we've got some, some, just some paperwork, some housekeeping paperwork to get squared away, um, yeah, or we can get you. Um, I think the, the, the plan was later on or at some point to have an action on this today for you, but it sounds like we need to table. Uh, an action until you, the town gets, you get your LLC stuff squared away, so, yeah.
And meet every, meet again in two weeks, if it's something you could get done within that window, they can have it on, potentially on the next meeting in two weeks.
When, how, uh, how, um, how much do you have left to do at the, at the business there to get, you know, how close are you to being?
Um, we need to paint the walls, lay the floor, and my, um, electrician's gonna finish it this weekend.
Gotcha, okay, so, all right.
Pretty close.
Pretty close, but yeah, so two weeks is reasonable, then, so we get you, you get time to get finished up and.
Yeah, I can definitely at least create a new LLC within two weeks, um, and like, I'll reach out to state like you recommended and see if they can terminate it or what I have to do. Um.
Right.
That works for me.
Well, that sounds good.
Just in, while Isabel's here, but that won't create any issues with the site plan review process, right?
No. No.
Okay.
The department conditions was to obtain a local license, but obviously you can't open it to a couple of.
Right, okay, perfect.
All right. Sounds like a plan, so, any other questions, comments, concerns? All right.
We're gonna assume, as soon as I get that created, I send it to Isabel, and then go from there, all right.
Yeah, we'll have it on the docket for our.
All right.
Next meeting, so, all right, thank you for coming. All right, uh, hearing no more questions, comments, concern, we will, uh, close the, uh, public hearing for above and beyond. LLC, and with that, I'll call the, uh, January eighteenth select board meeting to order. Um, we have some, uh, take care of some housekeeping, some minutes, everybody get a chance to see the minutes of, uh, the twenty first and the fourth. All right, do we hear a motion on the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve both sets of minutes, December twenty first and January fourth.
Thank you, Tom.
Second.
Want a second then, Andrea? Yeah, no fighting over tonight, I was just, all right, any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, motion carries there, uh, financial reports, we have a payroll warrant number thirty four. Do we hear a motion on thirty four?
Make a motion to approve payroll warrant thirty four.
Thank you, Andrea, Tom, you got a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? All right, motion carries, and we have a accounts payable, uh, number thirty five.
I make a motion to approve accounts payable number thirty five.
Thank you, Tom, a second, Andrea's got a second, and, uh, any discussion? All right, all those in favor? Okay, that carries. All right, that's it for housekeeping, so we can move on to, uh, some citizen's comments and general correspondence, uh, Andy, do you have anything through, uh? Mail or email to share with us, or?
Hmm, eighteen pages there.
Wow.
None that I recall.
That's later, yeah. Yeah, and we have any, uh, anybody in the audience to see this, so. All right, hearing none, we're gonna move on, and actually, I'm gonna, uh, we're gonna bump this up a little bit, I, I, I was gonna make you wait till the very end. Uh, but we'll, we'll, we'll move you up a little bit, so, yeah. So we do have, uh, on the docket night, a, um, I'm gonna bounce up to action items, we do have a liquor license renewal for reunion stations. Um, figure we could, uh, uh, make them sweat it out over there. Um, this is a pretty straightforward renewal, um. If you guys are okay with that, we can.
Yep.
Move that along, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the renewal of the liquor license for renewal, uh, reunion station.
Thank you, Tom, Andrea seconds, any discussion? All those in favor? All right, motion carries, yeah, back to work. Yeah. Yeah. All right, so, so we'll back up, uh, Andy, we have some, uh, capital updates you want to go over? Yes, you ready? Catch you off guard over there.
That's fine, the, uh, the Mile Street project, the, I know the engineers and the contractors are going back and forth on finalizing. That, I know we were trying to work around, um, the intended expanded scope, um, while we still wait for the final audit numbers to. Be able to get the select board to consider approving additional funds to finish the road between, um, Schooner. Um, and Bristol, um, and try and get the whole thing completed, so, um. You know, I think the contractor would, oops, sorry.
The last minutes. I put in Schooner, I was trying to Stewart.
Schooner Street?
It is Schooner.
It's Schooner.
It is Schooner. Yeah, there was a weird correction, you're, you're right in, I don't, Linda, yeah.
But it is Schooner that feeds, yeah, it is Schooner that feeds into Miles, right?
Yeah.
But it's not Stewart, right, Anton? It's Schooner.
Schooner.
Correct, okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, so the hope is that they'll be able to, we're trying to get the focus on signing the contract so they can get the pipe purchase in, um, in the works, I'm excited, it's one of the biggest lead times, so. Um, the expectation was that was, I think we were trying to get that done last week, but it has not been completed yet, so that's, that's, they're working that out, um.
Holding it up, Andy.
It just trying to go through, I think, and just communicate between it and, you know, the holiday in there on Monday and. What going on in big snowstorm that tied up the contractors from, you know, so they're working on it. Um, just takes a little bit of time.
Takes some time.
Um. Egypt and Belvedere Road, the, all of the culverts, um, that needed to be replaced or, or worked on have been done. And the contractors started doing some shouldering work, um, along Egypt Road, um, before the snow fell on it. Um, so there's a little bit more, I think they're, I don't say they're halfway, but they're probably close to halfway across Egypt Road with the shouldering work, um. And so that'll just kind of help in trying to get better slopes on some of those sections of the water, once it gets off the road, continue moving off the road and. There were sections where the shoulder was higher than the surface now, so. Um, that'll be a big improvement, um. Then the parking lot project, uh, the engineers are working on a, an updated preliminary engineer design. Um, they started on that track before, right before Christmas, um, so with Christmas and New Year's, that kind of. Put everyone's, you know, kind of delayed a few a little bit, and so, um, I'm pushing them to have this ready for EDA for their February meeting, which means it should be coming in the next couple of weeks.
September here.
Yes.
Um, that was a jab at you, that was just, it's been a long process.
It has been a long process, so EDA is, we're trying to work with them to get the scope modified again, you know, and so we just. We need to get this preliminary engineering reviewed, uh, you know, because we had a smit one before, so they want to see it without the wall in there, what does all of that look like? And again, still trying to fight for and justify the full, um, old grant. And again, still trying to fight for and justify the full um old grant award. Um, that still needs to be used for this as project costs have increased um since twenty nineteen, so. Um, that's what, that's where the hangup is with them really, is trying to still justify that, so they're moving and working on that. Um, with Church Street, um, you know, just, it's on the radar to kind of have and try and find some grant funds. I mentioned at the last meeting, there might be a um, a, a grant the state might be applying for, and that is still the case and did get confirmation this afternoon that. Our project um is kind of still in the running. Um, and where that process might be a little fluid, I think the application that they need to submit to do in early February. Um, so as they try and pull together everything they need from towns, um, we can take it up in the action items, but the consideration for. You know, kind of allowing me to work with um the retainage from the bond proceeds we have that were identified to go to Church Street and some of the private donations to. Um, try and leverage and find grants, um, this one in particular, and we'll bring forward anything that comes up as an opportunity, but. I know this one, they're kind of working on a tight turnaround.
Yeah, yeah.
It was one they identified before Christmas and then it became a little fluid and two agencies combined their application efforts, so they weren't competing with the same grant. Funder, they worked together and so projects, the scope got pared down a little bit from both their lists, and so we're still in the running.
Okay.
Um.
You want to get pre-authorized?
Yeah, later on, then, any action items there.
Yeah, we can go through those after.
Um, for the, the budget process, I had put in my memo to consider a meeting on the twenty-fifth with the. Budget committee, or is that actually scheduled, I think, in our schedule for tonight? Hadn't followed up on that, um, written the twenty-fifth, I'm actually gonna recommend the February first to your next regular meeting.
Okay.
And I'd like to put forward uh wage and benefits for all the departments, um, where that can take a. Considerable chunk of time sometimes for, for budget meetings and processes, I'd like to get that, and then that would give the departments time to. Reconsider what they've been working on before final submission of their budgets, um, if, if things change dramatically, you know, following that meeting. Um, but if we can kind of keep that in mind, if that's something that the board would like to entertain, and I can reach out to the chairman of the budget committee and see if that'll work for them.
Yeah.
Um. If that would be, it sounds like that might not be something you've done in the past or didn't do last year at least, but, um, I think that would be a good. A good discussion.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you're okay with, want to do it before third, see if four thirty works for the committee?
Yeah.
In two weeks?
Yeah, let's see if we can get him on, yeah.
February first at four thirty?
Four thirty, yeah. No, let's get him as soon as you can.
Yeah.
Get him moving, that's fine with us, so.
I think we're still aiming for the, about that third week or so in February to have the books ready. I think is what was on the calendar.
Yeah, correct. Sounds good.
Um, I was reminded by Becky today that the um. Spirit of America and Town Report dedication, just to get that on your radar and thinking about. Um, organize, you know, for Spirit of America, people or organizations. And that you might want to recognize through that award, um, and then for the annual report dedication, um, just think, I think, start thinking about that perhaps as it's. You know, Becky's sending out emails for, for organizations to send their reports in and.
Yeah. Yeah, you know. Other than that, I was, uh, it's a little aside there that, that, that. Didn't know that was part of the board chair's duties until last year. I kind of forgot, he was like, you need to do a report, I'm like, oh, is it due tomorrow? So I tell her I'm paying attention this time.
Perfect. And everything else I had on my memo is just part of the action items.
Yeah, yeah, no, sounds good, so, okay. Um, yeah, sounds good, we're making some headway, I know things are, some of the stuff crawls along and there's nothing you can do about it, waiting on. Second, third, fourth parties, but um, it's nice to see some stuff moving, Andy, so.
And Hodgson and Street probably didn't have it on there, but I know that, my understanding is that's still on the um, goals to have that ready to go out to bid later this month.
Yeah.
Um, so that.
Yeah, awesome.
That's good.
Yeah. Everybody's been talked to, the, we're good with the plan and everything.
Well, I noticed she has a dumpster in front of her house now, the barn.
That's a lot.
Yeah. Do some cleaning.
Yeah, okay. I guess it doesn't affect what we want to do, right?
No, no, no. No, shouldn't, they can have one there, so. Uh, all right, so we can, well, we'll move through official action items, we've already done the uh renewal for reunion station, um. So it looks like uh we're asking for some approval for grant funding, well. Um, I'll make a motion to authorize the town manager to seek and apply for grants. Related to Church Street project and utilize funds um from the uh bond, right?
Yeah, so between the bond, um, so some, it's kind of a little bit of a moving target with the project, Egypt and Belvedere project, so we had the two point two five.
Five, I think it was, uh, million and, so we don't know exactly where those two road projects will fall, but I have a.
A goal to bring over at least seven hundred and fifty thousand from, from those proceeds to go into the Church Street project.
Sounds.
Um, and we've gotten um two hundred and thirty-four thousand in private donation. For the efforts to build the sidewalk between school and Bristol Road. Or Biscay Road intersection, rather, um, and I know there was additional funds that came in through private donations to help with engineering, so. Between, between those two things, the donations and the bond proceeds, it's, it's almost a million dollars that we have available to leverage as matching funds.
Yeah, all right, I'll.
For the grants.
I'll amend my motion a little bit, because I, I said, I, I said the bond only, so, thank you. So, um, so I'll utilize available funds, um, including the bond and donations and money set aside for Church Street.
Second.
All right, thank you, Tom, any discussion? All those in favor? All right, motion carries, go find some money, big piles of it. Uh, all right, uh, the transfer station contract, um, I think everybody's gotten a look at that, um, we'll be looking at like a. Yeah, five percent increase.
Garbage is going up in it.
Which, you know, uh, to get excited about a five percent increase is. Kind of tells us where we are right now, but it's like, it's only five percent. So, um. I don't have any, anybody in discussion on, it's been pretty straightforward with the transfer station, so, um, I'll, I'll, I'll make a, uh. Motion to approve and sign the contract price for Noble Wero Jefferson transfer, uh, transfer station contract for uh twenty twenty-three.
Okay, a second.
All right, thank you, Andrea. All right, and that's all we had for, sneak anything else in there? Uh, right now, we're tabling the uh marijuana application for above and beyond, though. Two weeks.
Plan.
That's all we had, is that it?
Report for members.
Hundred and fifty-six pages.
Yeah. So, um, all right, I'll uh, we'll check with the board, Tom, any uh?
No, I have nothing tonight.
Nothing tonight? We were waiting for something profound, your first.
No, 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 nothing.
Andrea?
I'm, I'm fine, I'm good.
Um, the only thing I uh, I have to say is, yeah, well, glad to see Tom back and everybody here, um. Uh, I had a um, uh, request from the uh local boy scout troop, uh, troop, two thirteen, they were. Uh, working through their citizenship badge, um, and they requested, I happen to know the, the um, the scout master. So they asked for a uh, an elected official, um, local elected official, and apparently they. They asked me, because it put me on the spot, but it was, uh, I, I, I met with them last Thursday at their troop meeting at GSB and uh. It, what a, what a good time, they're, they're, they asked a lot of questions, it was off the cuff, I said, I'm, I'm gonna come in with, you know, winging it. Um, but the, 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 um, the boy scout troop, they, they had a lot of questions about, about civics and, and uh. Generally about local politics and whatnot and, and local government, so it was a lot of fun, so they're planning on, at some point, hopefully, we can, they're gonna come to a meeting. Um, I think they're gonna reach out to, to Andy just to give us some heads up, but we'll hopefully come into a meeting and hang out with us, so.
That's a good.
Yeah, oh yeah, we'll get something good for them. But it was, it was nice to see a group, a, a, a group of kids, uh, there's like twelve or thirteen, yeah, it was a good group, yeah. Yeah, and they had a lot of, a lot of questions about.
And the Eagle Scouts.
Yeah, um, you know, I don't know, I don't know, that's, that's a good question, um, but we can hopefully, they'll, they'll visit us and we can, we can grill them, so, yeah. But that's all I had, just want to share that with the board, so, yeah, all right, so, that's it. Anybody has a motion?
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
A second.
Um, Andrew's seconds, all uh, all, all those in favor? Just like that.
Wow.
Like, wow.